We're starting the meeting. We will call our meeting to order. This is the May 21st, 2025 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We do have a quorum present today. We do have one person that has registered under our public comments. So that'll be our first item of business today. Mr. Ed Stone has registered to speak today. Mr. Stone is in the audience. You can work your way towards the podium. Mr. Stone is speaking on one item later in our agenda. So, Mr. Stone, you will come forward. You'll state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments to the planning commission. And we just ask that, like with all our public hearings and public comments, you make all of your comments directly to the planning commission. We'll make notes of your comments and concerns. And then when we go to that item on the agenda, we'll try to address the comments and concerns that you have. So we'll not be answering all your questions during this time. So with that, if you would like to go ahead and make any of your comments.
My name is Eddie Stone. I live at 2106 River Chase Townhomes. This is concerning the pickleball development. And had this development been done correctly, we would have had a chance to come speak to y'all before these pickleball courts were placed right on our property line. I'm literally 25 feet from these pickleball courts. But he was not totally honest with y'all. He said he was just converting four tennis courts into pickleball courts. But he turned four tennis courts into 11 pickleball courts. He brought in concrete and greatly enlarged the size of this development. The first week that these courts were open, they had a tournament. And it was so loud, it drove me from my home at 8:00 in the morning. At 6:50, they were out there with a PA speaker making announcements. You know, this is a 55 and older complex. And they not only announced the games, they played music the entire day. I left at 8:00 to go to my sons. I came back at 4:00. It was still going on. That should not be allowed right beside a residential community. So I would like to see some adjustments made to this development. I know in the Phase 2, he is going to put some trees up. And that will help some. And there's going to be a fence. The fence is six foot. I'd like to see it increased to 10. I'd also like to see some padding be added to the fencing around the pickleball courts. There is foam padding, two or three inches, encased in a hard durable fabric that can be attached to it that will absorb some of that sound. I've got recordings. I don't know if I can play these for y'all. Is that possible? I've got it recorded, how loud it was that day from my patio.
Okay. We'll let y'all. Can you turn those in to the planning department? Or do we need to listen to those today?
I think if Mr. Stone would like to, he could give us the planning department. That could be made part of the record potentially.
Because it'll probably take up all of your three minutes to play those.
Right. But I would love for somebody to hear them. I would love for somebody to have been over and surveyed the property and seen just how close our units are to his pickleball courts. But I would also like to beg and plead with y'all to adjust the amount of hours that they can play pickleball. Currently, it is set up for 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That is cruel and unusual punishment to have to listen to pickleball. I don't know if any of y'all have heard pickleball, but it is extremely loud. They know they have a problem. They're trying to come up with a new paddle and a new ball right now because it's driving people crazy. So between the loudspeaker and 11 courts going at the same time, it's unbearable. And I would also like to request y'all not allow him to roll a loudspeaker down there when he has tournaments or when they're just playing and play music loud the whole time. That should not be allowed. And I'd hope y'all take some of these things into consideration since we didn't have a chance to speak with y'all before the courts were put there. He put the cart before the horse, and he misled y'all. Because when I first came over and talked to Richard Donovan, he said there was nothing they could do, that it was zoned for tennis courts. And I said, "Yeah, but he's greatly increased the size of it." You know, it's going to create a nuisance. It's ruining our quality of life. I'll never use my patio again in the spring and summer when pickleball's going on. But, you know, it wasn't done the right way. And then when I talked to Mr. Newman, the head planter, he said, "We don't appreciate it when people ask for forgiveness instead of permission." Well, that's exactly what happened with this development. The courts were already there, and now we have to deal with it. And I've seen in the revised plan, he's going to have a restaurant and a bar overlooking these courts. He could have put that restaurant and bar up against the property line and moved these courts more to the center of his property. He wasn't landlocked. He had more room to move it. But he chose to put them right on the property line. And my guess was to save money because he just resurfaced the asphalt that was there from the 1980s from the tennis courts. And evidently, the pickleball club complained, which by the way, I've heard, remember they've guaranteed him $20,000 a month when all of these courts are operational. And he has four courts inside. So he can take some of this noise. If he wants to play a loudspeaker and announce the games, he can take them inside.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Well, I hope y'all will give us some consideration since we got no chance to speak up front when this started. If you would give us some help at the end because...
This will be Item 7F on our agenda. So those are the comments we'll take into consideration when we get to that item.
Matthew, can you get him to email that?
Sure.
And then can you send it to planning and council, please?
Sure.
Is that possible? Thank you.
Okay. Our next item of business today is to approve minutes of the May 7th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Again, we reviewed those ahead of time. If anybody has any changes, please let us know. And otherwise, we're ready for a motion on the minutes.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Fulcham, you're going to call and roll for us today.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have our consent agenda. Again, we reviewed that ahead of time. We do have one item on here we are going to remove from the consent agenda. It is Item J, the Eastside Village. And we are going to move that to staff reports and other business just because there's one item staff needs to just discuss with us. So the consent agenda will be as presented except for the removal of Item J. Any other changes to that? And if not, we'll be ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second with the removal of Item J. Ms. Fulcham?
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Abstain.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we will have the GDO portion of our agenda. We have five items there today. The first item is the La Quinta Hawthorne Hotel. It is final design review and site plan review for a 64,243-square-foot, 102-room hotel on 2.31 acres, zoned commercial highway in GDO 1, located along Cedar Glades Drive and Manson Crossing Drive, Krishna Patel and Rohinda Atel developers. Mr. Bobby, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. This next item on the GDO portion of your agenda is a request for a 64,000-square-foot, 102-room hotel located at the intersection of Cedar Glades and Manson Crossing Drive. You previously reviewed this application during the initial design review phase on April 16th. And it was approved subject to staff comments at that point. Staff has further worked with the design team to refine the formal open space areas on this plan and provide some additional screening. The plan itself is in generally good condition. And we would request that any approval is made is subject to staff comments.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions, concerns regarding this item?
You said this is just final design review?
This is final.
And site plan.
Site plan. Okay.
Yes, final design and site plan.
I... This has already come to planning? I must have missed that meeting. I apologize.
During the initial design review, we focused more on architecture at that point.
Okay. Can we look at the ingress and the egress, Brad? Is it onto Manson Crossing or just onto Cedar Glades?
They have points on both, and it's a little difficult to see.
I know. I'm really not enjoying the drawing, to be honest.
But here you can see, this is the ingress-egress point on Manson Crossing. And then... There's a shared access here on Cedar Glades.
Is that adjoining property to Stanlake Chiropractic?
It says...
Or is that a vacant lot before?
I believe it is a vacant lot. Let me scroll. Be faster just to scroll over here. Yes, the adjacent property is currently vacant.
Okay. So the shared drive off Cedar Glades will be with the vacant lot?
Yes, the shared drive off Cedar Glades will be in approximately that location, sharing between the two properties.
In engineering, as far as traffic flow getting out of Cedar Glades onto Fortress? Have we talked about that? Because there's not a light there. So if we dump the traffic from this hotel onto Cedar Glades, they don't have a light to turn onto Fortress. They have to cross three lanes of traffic to get to turn left.
Manson Pike. You go down Manson Crossing, go out Manson Pike, you've got a light on Fortress the other way.
Yeah, it's not a fully developed road yet, though. I mean, my golf cart won't even traverse it.
I think this now will have some additional information.
That Cedar Glades Drive, just, I mean, it backs up with just a Sonic and a Mexican restaurant right now.
There are plans for a signal at Manson Crossing and Manson to get there. And then you could take Manson Pike out to Fortress.
You're saying Manson Crossing and Manson will have a light?
Yes.
And they'll turn... Okay.
Turn right and then...
I'm thinking people leaving the hotel trying to get to the interstate. That's the path I'm trying to traverse.
So the developer of this subdivision has already paid a contribution to go towards this signal at Manson Crossing. I don't think there's enough separation between that signal and Cedar Glades to have a signal here and then also at Puckett Station.
Is there any way to keep the traffic from... I guess I'm just thinking, do we make the Cedar Glades entrance a right-in, right-out so that they don't turn left out of the development onto Cedar Glades and then trying to turn left onto Fortress? Can we force them to go around Manson Creek Crossing that way?
I don't know that a right-in, right-out at the hotel entrance would solve that problem because they could want to go still turn onto Cedar Glades to turn right to go to Fortress to 96.
Then go the back way. I mean, the other way, the main entrance. So we're deciding that the main entrance is on Cedar Glades, not Manson Creek Crossing?
I mean, they're both local streets. So the trip counts on those streets don't necessarily warrant a right-in, right-out. Actually, I think Manson Crossing might be a collector. I'm not sure. Oh, local. It says it right there on the screen. I can bring your concerns to our traffic department about that intersection of Cedar Glades and Fortress. Can I get to GIS?
Yeah, I need some time with that. I mean, there's a lot of accidents that happen right there and near accidents. And again, the traffic, I mean, this hotel will probably... Do we know the impact it's going to have on Cedar Glades or on Manson Creek? Did traffic respond? Katie?
We did get input from traffic, our traffic department, with this site plan. And the feedback was that they contribute to the signal at Manson Crossing and Manson Pike.
They're not going to go to Manson Pike, though. They're going to go to Fortress.
Distance there...
You know where Cedar Glades Drive is. It's a tiny road.
Feet?
I'm going to take the white if I don't...
I agree, but what about these people that stay? You're not staying. They're out of town. They're going to go to that nearest entrance and then try to cross right here, and it's a mess.
So typically, we like to see at least 1,200 feet between signals, Manson Pike and Cedar...
I agree, Katie. I'm not asking for a signal there. I'm saying I don't want the primary entrance to this development to be on Cedar Glades. I want to somehow have the traffic, when at all possible, circulate through Manson.
Are you saying it would help if their mailbox was on Manson and not... Like if their mailbox address was a Manson Crossing address where GPS would take you to the Manson Crossing?
Maybe that's one way to do it. Can we make the mailbox on Manson Creek so at least GPSs take us? Or Manson Crossing, I mean?
That sounds like a question.
So it looks like the... So our addressing protocol is that it's addressed for the front door, where the primary entrance is.
Right.
And it appears that the primary entrance is on Cedar Glades Drive. And that most visible is the back of house and the side from Manson Crossing Drive.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, yeah. Well, at least we like the brick color, I guess. But who cares if there's going to traffic on Cedar Glades? Glad that's the discussion we had. I'm a no. Yeah, I'm a no. What can I do for you?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the planning commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We're the civil engineers on the project and have been the civil engineers on the overall development. I'd like to point out that the overall developer has made a six-figure contribution for that signal at Manson Pike, at Manson Crossing Drive and Manson Pike. Not only that, he constructed the rest of Manson Crossing Drive from this location to Manson Pike. So he's made a significant investment, he feels like, for the city of Murfreesboro to provide an alternative for anybody using the Cedar Glades Drive.
Is it finished? Is Manson Crossing?
Yes, it's finished and open.
I blew a tire on it last week. Lot of potholes to be finished.
It might not have the final topping. The city's policy is for the subdivision to be built out to at least 70% to have the final topping.
Will this make it 70% before we add 75 extra cars a day?
No, because there are additional lots on Manson Crossing that can be developed off the new road that was constructed.
So personally, I think, I mean, sorry, Jamie. I'm going to go be arbitrary to you a little bit. If you're coming off the interstate, coming to this hotel, you're going to turn right in Cedar Glades.
Yes.
So you're not going to necessarily have to worry about a traffic light. When you're coming out, you're most likely going out Manson Crossing to go to the traffic light on Manson Pike. So I don't think you're as worried. I don't... Just me, I'm thinking you're not as worried about...
Well, you would because you live here.
But if I pass the stop, if I see this as going out a stoplight way, I'm not necessarily going back out to try to turn left across Fortress.
But they won't see the stoplight. If you're leaving the hotel for checkout at 10:00 a.m., how are you going to know there's a stoplight? Well, you've got to pass a Walmart and all a bunch of other stuff before you even see that stoplight. You're turning left. I mean, there's just no way someone leaves this hotel and thinks, "Oh, I'm going to turn right onto this street," and then surely there's a stoplight. And that's a long distance from this entrance to that stoplight. I run it every day. That's a long distance.
So you think they're turning left off of Cedar Glades onto Manson Crossing is going to be the main?
I think they're going to come out of the hotel onto Cedar Glades Drive, which is already impossible to turn left out of Stanlake Chiropractic. And then you have to cross three lanes onto Fortress, which is a very, very busy road.
And there are wrecks there.
I see wrecks there constantly. A car flipped a few weeks ago. People would drive so fast. And then when the light is active right there and on red at Fortress and Manson, the cars are backed up. And you have cars on Cedar Glades trying to cross six lanes of Fortress to go into the Starbucks. I mean, this whole intersection is a disaster already. I just want the cars to leave the hotel and go onto Manson Crossing. I appreciate the investment in the light. I really do, and in the road. That I'm thankful for. I'm fine with the hotel.
What if we get rid of the entrance? Yeah, that's what I was going to say. What if we got rid of the Cedar Glades?
Well, that's why I was saying, can we not do a right-in, right-out? That way, they can still leave on Cedar Glades, and then it loops them onto Manson Crossing.
Or just put two entrances on Manson Crossing and get rid of the Cedar Glades entrance? That way, you still have two exits.
Or just make that an entrance only. They can enter in, but they can't exit out on Cedar Glades.
Yeah. There you go.
Can we make it an entrance only on Cedar Glades instead of an exit?
Is it being shared access between the other development? I'm not sure. I was also wondering about just adding some signage. I know some of the businesses on South Church have the access to signal to exit from the rear or something like that.
Like within the property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On Merchants Walk and stuff, it says, "Take the back and come out on Indian Park to go out Church Street."
Well, Cedar Glades is a high-traffic area with Sonic, Camino, and Walmart. It's a lot of traffic there. So it's pretty hard to pull out of Cedar Glades and go to the left. And a lot of people tried, and that's where accidents come. So I agree with you. I think we need to figure out how to push the traffic back on the Manson Crossing on Manson because, you know, you're not knowing from out of town. That's the way you came in. You're trying to go back out the same way.
I agree. And that Walmart there, we made them have the right-in, right-out because we didn't want them trying to turn left on the Fortress. And so the Walmart has a right-in, right-out on Manson, a right-in, right-out on Fortress. And then it doesn't actually have an exit on Cedar Glades. It just pours onto a collector, that shared access right there.
I do think the signal will change the dynamic in the area considerably. I don't know exactly what it's going to do, but...
But it's really all going to matter, I mean, if you're not from here, it doesn't matter at Hillabees if you know where you're going because your GPS is telling you where to go. You're not just driving it off of your memory. So...
GPS is going to take them with the way.
Whatever the GPS is telling them to do is what it's going to do.
So for clarification, are we wanting to put a signal on Fortress and Cedar Glades?
No, it's too close to the next...
I just want to make sure.
Manson Crossing and Manson.
Okay.
It's going to have one.
Right.
I think the signage goes a long way to say, "Exit the signal over here."
And so we can't do a right-in, right-out on Cedar Glades and do some signage? That's a limiting word. Why can't we? Let's figure it out, Katie.
I mean, we could. I don't know. So this will be the signal right here.
Right.
And so we're talking about the right-in, right-out.
You got the car wash.
Is that adjoining property? How does that, you know, is that working for them, too?
I don't know. Right-in, right-outs.
But do we have to have the entrance on Cedar Glade, period?
Yeah, let's just mix it all together.
You do, don't you?
Well, whatever this lot is, will still have an access because there's not a shared access with the chiropractor's office.
Right, but that lot can have an access without it being a shared access. So if you ex-nade the shared access to the hotel and just got rid of the entrance to the hotel on Cedar Glades, then it gets rid of what Jamie's saying, then everything has to go on Manson Crossing.
Yeah.
Cedar Glades is a dangerous road.
If you're at the hotel because you're going to Stanlake Chiropractic, you're left and over.
Well, you got, there's a piece of property between Stanlake and this that's not developed yet.
There, and then you can't, like, what? You can't turn left on Cedar Glades and drive in over at Stanlake. You've got to go...
And what if you're at the hotel and you want to go to Camino to eat? You're going all the way around the block.
It's across the street. It's about four feet.
Help us out, Mr. Huddleston. What options do we have?
Well, we've never done this before, but we went ahead and dropped it in maps to see which way somebody would go leaving this access on Cedar Glades. And it shows going back to Manson Pike Crossing to Manson Pike.
And that's what anybody's going to do, is they're going to put it in their phone, and their phone's going to tell them where to go.
And so, and we worked with staff very diligently on this access situation. At first, we had our own access, and staff was clear that they wanted us to share it with the vacant parcel next door.
I just, I don't hang, I mean, I agree, people are going to do what maps are going to do. But what Maps, Apple Maps tells us today is going to change based on consumer usage is the thing. Apple Maps is an AI, beautiful beast of technology. So it's going to tell you that right now. But it's going to change as soon as this building's built because it's going to follow what people do.
I'd say that with all due respect, when that signal gets put in there, that signal's going to make the route to Manson Pike more attractive than using Cedar Glades.
I respectfully disagree, Mr. Huddleston. We're at an impasse once again.
I still would think we have a... I would be concerned about having this big hotel site and only having that one entrance in and out over on Manson Crossing, not having any access in or out on Cedar Glades.
Well, but then the right-in, right-out would give us an out.
I like that.
Yeah, you just might have it shared with the other...
Both of mine take...
The problem with that...
I think you have to have something on Cedar Glades.
The traffic coming in, they can turn left into Cedar Glades. So if you do away with that, you can't turn left, and you have to go all the way down to Manson. They come all the way around to get to Sonic, you know? So it's a high-volume traffic area right now that we're adding to it.
So you're saying if they're driving down Fortress and toward the interstate, they turn left on the Cedar Glades?
They can turn left to go into Cedar Glades right now.
Right, so they turn left into Cedar Glades.
But if you make it one way in, one way out, you can't turn left. That's what I'm saying.
We're just talking about off of site.
Right, I'm talking about...
We're not talking about making Cedar Glades a right-in, right-out, just a hotel.
Yeah, just at the hotel entrance.
All right.
Where it adjoins that vacant lot to the lot.
So one thing that would do with this being a shared access, if you make it a right-in, right-out, that is also this lot's access. So then this lot no longer can have access back to the signal because they would be forced to go...
But what if we get rid of the shared access and just have that adjacent lot be its own access and its own...
They would, that have to come from Cedar Glades to get in.
No, no. What I'm saying is...
Separate them.
Separate where there's not a shared access. Give the hotel site its own entrance with a right-in, right-out. Have the adjacent lot have its own entrance that's not shared. And separate the two where they can't cross, across each other. And that takes care of all of it.
But then you're not solving the problem on the vacant lot next door.
You still have its own entrance.
It would have a right-in, right-out, too, though.
And their only entrance is going to be a right-in, right-out? They don't have that. Well, they've got that whole... As long as it doesn't get subdivided and it becomes a separate lot.
Right. But then you can't have two entrances. They'd have a shared lot.
They need this shared entrance. And they need to share each other back and forth to be able to... If they're over here at the vacant lot and they want to go right, they need to be able to go right out of that shared entrance.
Yeah, and Bill can speak to this. He can confirm or say I'm wrong. But I think that the master plan has that as a separate lot, not with...
Now, it looks like a huge lot.
You are correct. Yeah, I think that there's a master plan cutting that into several different lots.
Okay. So it is a separate lot on Cedar Glades.
Jamie, does that take care of your concern? If they get rid of the shared access, that adjacent lot had its own entrance that's not shared, and then they put a right-in, right-out at the hotel on Cedar Glades? Does that take care of your concern?
Yes.
Only for this lot?
Only for this lot.
When we come back with the one next door, what are you going to do then?
Well, depending on the traffic impact and the traffic, maybe it can have a turn left, but probably would say it needs a right-in, right-out, and their traffic needs to go to Manson Crossing. Cedar Glades is a tiny road. It's the size of a neighborhood road. I mean, it's a small, it's like an alley.
So, yeah, I'm just going to look through. I was just wondering, either Mr. Huddleston or Katie, I'm not sure. I was just wondering, either Ms. Huddleston or Katie, I'm not sure, does having two separate right in, right out access on each, you know, one on each lot, does that solve any issues of their having a shared right in, right out?
How big is the difference?
Yeah, people can't turn left.
If you're going to make them both right in, right out...
I mean, that's what you're saying.
If you think they both should be, been shared.
I think you're just creating U-turns when you do that.
Don't break the law when you drive, Mr. Huddleston.
Hello, everyone.
I can only handle the plans. I don't have to take, have anything to do with the driver or the condition of the vehicle.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ritesh Patel. I'm part of the development team for this property. I mean, with the right in, right out, the only concern I do have, I mean, at the hotel, we can definitely put up signages. We've done this with other properties we have in Murphysboro, where we tell guests, similar to some of the things on Church Street, where we tell guests to go down to Warrior Drive to make a right turn rather than trying to pass through that Mapco area. So we can definitely put up signage in the hotel to inform guests of the entrances. My concern with having a right in, right out is I can't guarantee how my guests have traffic coordination right. My concern is they're going to try to go to Camino, they're going to try to go to Sonic, they're going to try to go to that Walmart, and they're going to try to make a right turn and pop a U-turn in the middle of Cedar Glades Drive to go to this intersection. And that's my biggest thing, because those are some of the biggest advantages as this property for guests. And so that, like I said, that's just my bigger concern, is guests are going to try to make a right out, and they're going to pop a U-turn in the middle of the street to go to Camino, Sonic, any of those other businesses, the subway over there as well.
There's not a subway.
Sorry, was it Moses?
Blue, blue cars for you now.
You got the car wash or more gas?
What are you saying?
I agree.
That does make sense. I mean, I wouldn't do it, but people would do that. I could see them turning right. It's a three-lane right there.
Well, it's so narrow, I couldn't make a U-turn myself.
How wide is it, Katie? It's three lanes right there, isn't it?
It's a three-lane, 33, it should have a 33-foot pavement.
It's 11-foot lanes?
Yeah, but if you've got a truck, I mean, you're not really...
I don't U-turn, period. I drive a 2500, it's impossible, but I'm just, if I drove a Kia, probably could.
Is it a three, is there a center lane?
Yes.
Yeah, it's narrow.
And so why can't we have a left out then if there's a center lane?
Because we're worried about people getting on Fortress, turning left on Fortress. That's the dangerous intersection.
When they get all the way down.
Yes, it's a public, this is a public safety thing for me. You guys, I'm, look, if I'm the only no vote, that's fine. Y'all please proceed to vote. I live, Reggie, you're on that side of town. I live in the neighbor, I mean, I live here, I walk this, I go to Camino, I go to Sonic, I go to the Walmart, and I constantly tell myself, man, I wish I was on planning commission when this stuff got approved, because it's danger to public safety.
You were.
No, I wasn't. I was not. It's not like my fourth year here, Ms. Jones.
Stanley looks pretty neat.
Yeah, you approve Stanley.
Oh, I voted against it, remember?
Is it the color?
I mean, like, I feel like the only long-term plan would be to make Cedar Glades a right turn only onto Fortress. That's the only thing you could do if you wanted to fix all of it, is don't be able to turn left onto Fortress at all.
I can bring that concern to our public infrastructure department, the engineer, and let them...
I mean, just put like an island right there and just...
Let them evaluate that, because those are public rights of way, so that would be...
I mean, because that, I mean, you've got a problem with the hotel, but I mean, you've got six other businesses on the road. I mean, just make it a right where you can only go right on Fortress, you can't turn left. You're not going to whip a U-turn in Fortress. I mean, I mean, they might, but it, I wouldn't advise it, I'm just saying, but...
It's been done.
I do think the signal will help, and I think we need to see how the signal affects traffic.
Right.
And how that, how that works out, but we can bring those concerns to our public infrastructure department. They can study the area.
And we can do, I mean...
And signage onsite.
At a minimum...
Signage in the property.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, whoever makes the motion, I want signage on the property, please.
Yeah. I think signage required to pass it, that's pointing them to the interstate, like you were saying, like 224 or something, and then I think someone definitely needs to look at Cedar Glades as far as that intersection, turning left out of Fortress. I mean, we have, say, break ground tomorrow, I mean, it's going to be a year before the hotel's built, 11 months. I mean, we got time to figure it out before it's fully done.
Because you know what they're going to do.
Does it do us any good to...
Yeah.
Approve final design review if we're okay with all the design side of things, and hold out site plan so they can keep moving forward and, you know, can we do that? Is it work?
In order for them to keep moving forward, both would have to be approved.
Those have to be.
Yeah. I'm like Mr. Carroll. I think we got 11 months to figure out Cedar Glades and the signage, and I did the same thing as Mr. Huddleston did. I put directions in my phone and asked how to get there, and it took me to Manson Crossing, not to Cedar Glades. And that's what, if you're out of town, you're going by what your GPS is telling you to do, not...
Did it take you there getting there?
It took me there getting there from here.
What's it do whenever, if you're there and you're leaving?
All right, hold on, I'll see.
And while you're doing that, so what, if we are going to talk about how we go about moving this forward, how are we addressing this entrance on Cedar Glades Drive, and are we making that a shared access with the two?
I think you leave it how it is.
Just leave it.
All right, so it gives me...
I mean, they might want to go to Camino or something too, you want to...
Yeah.
We do something different in the long run in the 11 months.
So if I tell it to go from this hotel to City Hall, it's gave me, gave me two choices. I either go down Manson Crossing and go down Manson Pike back to, back to Medical Center, or it's got me going right out of Cedar Glades, which nobody here has had a problem with, to go back to Franklin Highway to come back this way.
Okay.
The other thing is too, when you get to Manson, you can also turn left, and then turn left on Puckin Creek Crossing, and there's a signal there too.
Yeah, so as long as there's signals, signs to say both ways how to get to a signal, you got two, you got a signal going both directions. So I think with, and when I lived on the south side of town, I did business with all of those businesses up and down Church Street that had the signs that say go back towards the signal, and that's how every person got back, they went back to the signal, not across Church Street.
Yeah.
And Church Street's a lot more wild than Fortress is.
Like leaving tubes or something like that.
Yeah.
Take a left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve then.
I second this motion.
With the signs and the...
Signage on the property, and then asking the city to take a look at the...
Cedar Glades Drive.
Second. That.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Fulcham. Miss Everwater?
Aye.
Miss Everwater?
Aye.
Miss Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones? Aye. Okay. Motion passes. In the end, it was fabulous plan that we looked at. We just dissected it, but...
Hit my car, running tomorrow morning, I'm going to blame y'all, just say it.
All right. We'll all look for the signs when we come to the hotel.
Hold on, one, something chasing, the other's chasing.
All right, our next item. We have Item B, it's Volunteer Behavioral Health Canopy Edition. It's an initial design review for the addition of an entryway canopy at an existing office building zoned MU and GDO 3, located along Williams Drive. Volunteer Behavioral Health Services developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again, Chair Jones and members of the planning commission. This next application before you is for a canopy addition unto an existing structure located along Williams Drive. This is the Volunteer Behavioral Health Building. The only work that they are proposing is the addition of a canopy that you will see in this elevation here. It's sight view, you can see it here being added as well. The building materials that they've selected are to match the existing building. And we are also requesting that since this is initial design review and it is such a small project, we're requesting that you consider making this both initial and final design review and making your motion based on that at this meeting if you see fit. I'm available if you have any questions, and the plan is generally in good order.
All right, I'm just, bring back to my memory, there was another building around this same location that there was a canopy that we took off, then put back on, then changed, and something else. Does anybody remember?
That was Mark's building, and that is, well, we have to go to the GIS.
That comes aside.
That's what I was trying to remember.
What was it? We took on and took off?
Yeah, what was the discussion?
That was the sleep center building, maybe?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it had something to do with the actual use, the way they were, it was in the middle of the building and only certain people could...
Right.
It was confusing to the patients.
The handicap. What a physician's park.
Laugh, but it was only for the physicians.
Right. That was weird.
Yeah.
That was the building that was proposed at the life point.
Yeah.
Lot that's just down the street.
This is just a canopy for...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were being consistent with our decisions.
Move for approval for initial and final design review.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Fulcham. Miss Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Now we're moving on to Item C. Wells Fargo, Clary Park 7, Lot 7. Initial design review for a 4,020-square-foot bank on 1.7 acres, zoned CH and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Honey Locust Lane. Wells Fargo Bank MA is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again. This is a proposal for a new 4,000-square-foot bank on the intersection of Medical Center Parkway and Honey Locust Lane. This is a part of the Clary Park development. Subject property is on Commercial Highway and GDO 1. This is the initial design review where we typically focus more on the building elevations, building materials. You may recognize this building. It is very similar to the Wells Fargo that they built on Memorial Boulevard. Building materials match. They have tweaked this building to provide more of the elements that are required inside the gateway design overlay. So building materials are consistent with our standards, as is the building architecture and design. Architecture, we feel, is in good order. They're still making some minor changes to the site plan, which we'll bring before you at the final design and site plan review at the next meeting. I'm available if you have any questions, and there are representatives from Wells Fargo and Timmons Group also available today if you would have any questions for them.
Okay, so we're looking at initial design reviews. Anybody have any particular issues or concerns?
Pretty consistent with the other ones.
I think it looks fine.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Yeah, they got it all out, didn't they?
Motion and a second, Ms. Fulcham. You're not giving her time. Miss Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Item D is Meadowlark Townhomes Phase 2 Horizontal Property Regime Plat for 47 single-family attached units and nine single-family detached units on 4.37 acres, zoned PRD and GDO 1, located along Wilkens and Pike and Willow Oak Trail. Toll Southeast LP Company, Inc. is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again. This is the Horizontal Property Regime Plat for Meadowlark Townhomes Phase 2. Typically, these plats would be on the consent agenda, but as this is located inside the gateway design overlay, it is being brought today for your review and consideration. The plat is generally in good order, and we would request that any approval be made subject to staff comments.
I'm going to abstain from this one.
I thought the nine detached units were facing Wilkens and Pike. They're facing Willow Oak Trail.
Let me see if we've got another...
I just, I just probably had it backwards in my mind.
They have detached units facing both Willow Oak Trail and Wilkens and Pike, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Akman with the SEC nodded his head in agreement.
Willow Oak is this side and...
And this is for Phase 2. The Phase 1 Horizontal Property Regime Plat has been already approved, and this is consistent with the, with the existing PRD zoning and with the approved site plan.
This is Phase 1. Yeah. This is Phase 1, which has been previously approved. What we're looking at today is this section that is Phase 2.
Thank you. That's where I was confused. Thank you.
Actually, I had the wrong neighborhood. I'm not abstaining.
We all needed some clarification on that. Thank you so much. Okay.
I will move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Fulcham?
Miss Everwater? Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Excuse me. All right. Our last item in the GDO is Clary Park Lot 15, Buena Beef. I don't know how to say that. Close enough? Amendment to the approved site plan review and final design review in order to add solar panels to a 4,706-square-foot restaurant with drive-through on 1.52 acres, zoned CH and GDO 1, located along Willow Oak Trail and Roby Corleone Lane. Buena Venture 1 developer. Mr. Barbe?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones. You've previously reviewed this for both initial and final design review during the first quarter of 2024, in which you approved both the building architecture and the site design for Buena Beef, Clary Park Lot 15. Since that time, the owner was able to obtain a Small Business Association grant, and a part of the requirements of that grant was for him to provide renewable energy sources for a portion of the energy used at the restaurant. He elected to utilize solar energy, given the area and the availability of the arrangement of the property. Since that time, they did come back and they have designed the property to add solar panels on the roof of the structure here. They are not visible at all from any adjacent area. Even in this image here, you would not be able to see them. It did add one very large solar panel, as you can see in this image here, that is actually covering the solid waste enclosure. They have confirmed that they're still able to access and utilize the solid waste enclosure as it's currently shown and designed. Building materials, the posts are wrapped in the same material as the building. They're also adding a soffit around the support structures that you can see here that's going to match materials from the building as well. That's the bulk of the changes to the property. I'm available if you have questions about the structure and I believe the owner is also available if you have questions as well.
Ms. Averwater just wants to know if the giant ice cream cone can be added back on?
Nope. She sure doesn't want to know that.
I'm not asking that question. Thank you.
If it has solar panels.
If it has solar panels. Exactly.
So really, my biggest question on this was that, you know, it just doesn't look like the truck can pull in there, empty those big dumpsters without damaging the solar panel, but I'm sure you're telling me that yes, it can.
It's up high enough where the truck can get under it. They'll have to pick it up, bring it out.
Sir, can you go to the podium and state your name, please?
Yeah, they'll have to pull into the...
And your name and address or your...
I'm sorry, what's that?
You need to state your name and your address.
My name is Tony Van Drum and I'm one of the co-owners of the Buena Beef.
Okay.
And the contractor. Yeah, we designed it such a way that the truck will be able to have plenty of clearance underneath the solar panel. They'll have to go in, pick it up, drive it out, pick it up, dump it, and then put it back in. So, I mean, it is going to take a little bit more work on their part, but we've already talked to the waste management people that are going to be handling our stuff. They said they wouldn't have any issue with it.
Excellent. Okay.
Do we have a picture of what this...
I just want to say one more thing, too. Our loan is contingent. What originally happened is we had the design done and the person messed it up and we ended up having to add the solar panels over the dumpster enclosure area to pick up enough solar generating power. We have to do 15% of what the total requirement is for the building has to be done with solar. So that's why we had to put in more of the panels. And really, the best thing to do was to put it over that thing. This will also act as a roof over it, keep the rain and stuff out of the dumpster enclosure area and off the cooler freezer.
Do we have a picture of what it'll look like, like an example of one or something? That's not. That's what it's going to be, a solid gray square? I mean, like the panel will look like that? Like a picture of an actual...
Solar panel.
Solar panel that will be on it. Do we have, is there any...
You know, I don't have anything, I didn't bring anything with me of what the solar panel is. It's going to be, I mean, it's going to look very similar, but with the exception of it'll be individual panels that are all connected together.
Planning department didn't ask for photos, renderings with the solar panels on it?
This is going to be up there.
When you have the war, it is the rendering. We don't have photo images because it's not been built on a site before.
Right, there's not a rendering with the solar panels on it?
That's a rendering showing the solar panels.
It's just showing it, it looks like one big solar panel.
It's a rendering, it's not a...
Right.
We're not going to be able to see it anyway because it's going to be on our roof, so...
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I get what you're getting at. I'm just like, what does it look like?
And there's no additional room on the roof to put your...
The whole roof has panels on it already.
Okay. So this is the only option?
This is pretty much it for...
Unless we put the ice cream cone and put solar panels on it.
Shut up. Move for approval.
Second.
Subject to staff comments?
Yes, sir, it is.
Second.
Ms. Fulchon, we have a motion and a second, please. Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. All right, that concludes our GDO portion of our agenda and we're moving on to plats and plans. First item there is West Point, Lots 29 and 30, Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Plat for two lots on 12.54 acres, Zoned Light Industrial, located along Beezy Road. Living Spaces is the developer. Mr. Donovan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones. So the first item I have for you this afternoon is for West Point. This is a Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Plat for a property that is going to have living spaces. We'll discuss that site plan next. So the Master Plan, you'll notice that's the only item with a comment in your staff report. Just something to note on the Master Plan, we're showing five new lots, 29 through 33. The comment that's in your staff report that myself and Ms. Noel made as well is related to Warrior Drive, which does not affect Lot 29 and 30, which is on the preliminary plat, but the city is currently working on a letter of map revision that is going to affect the layout of that road. Staff is comfortable with this moving ahead. We'll need to do an amendment when those additional parcels are developed to show the shift in that road, but that road will shift some and that's what the comment related to your staff report is. And then, as far as the preliminary plat, we are creating two lots of record here and associated easements for the living spaces site and then one site that will be for development in the future. Staff has reviewed these items. They're in generally good order and I'm happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Eric Pearl with Reagan Smith is here to answer any questions as well.
If staff feels comfortable with the road changing and the applicant does too, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Fulchon. Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Next item will be Living Spaces. It's a Murphysboro showroom site plan for a 125,800 square foot retail building on 11.02 acres, Zoned Light Industrial, located along Beezy Road. Living Spaces developer. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So this is Lot 29 on the preliminary plat that the body just reviewed. What they're looking at adding here is a single story of 125,800 square feet, which will be a proposed furniture store in the Light Industrial zoning district. So you'll notice on the site plan in front of you, there are three accesses to this site on Beezy Road, one to the south, one middle of the property, and then one at the upper end of the property there that will eventually, is in an access easement and will eventually connect through when Warrior Drive is extended. So the majority of the property is in, our parking is within the front of the building. They're showing 258 parcels over our, there are 48 parcel, 48 parking spaces over our required parking for this site. This site also, with it being a furniture store, is going to have some pickup and delivery, which is in the back for customers that come to pick up items on-site, as well as that's where their dumpster and a generator enclosure are shown as well. Let me clear the screen here. The one item of note for planning commission that we'll ask you to weigh in on is related to the building and architecture. So the applicant is proposing along the front facade, some metal, bronze metal panels, which is flanked by concrete tilt-up walls. The bottom has a plank, wood plank texture finish and then a textured finish on the upper portion of the building. And then the corner elements are natural stone product as well. The style of the front is continued and materials are continued on the four, three remaining sides, with the exceptions of the metal panel. The item of note here and for discussion for the planning commission is the concrete tilt-up panels, which, you know, these are large panels. Getting a hold of a sample for you to be able to see was going to be difficult, so I asked them to provide us some additional pictures for you to have. But what the dumpster, or, I'm sorry, the design guidelines say is that the primary materials in a commercial use are brick, stone, brick and stone. They're not listed as a secondary or a tertiary material, but they're also not listed as a prohibited material. So they're kind of in a gray area of whether the planning commission feels this is appropriate in this portion of town. One note, one item for you to note is that while they're not allowed for commercial uses, they are permitted as a material for industrial uses. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Again, Eric Pearl, who's representing the applicant, is here as well. They also have their architect to answer any questions that the planning commission may have about the building materials.
So if you were requiring something other than these concrete tilt-up panels, is there a big difference, since we can't say it's carbonated? I'm just saying, so maintenance, I mean, just the look, I mean, what is the reasoning behind whether or not we should look at allowing these concrete panels?
Yeah, I would allow the architect to kind of address the difference between the brick and what a brick or a stone material and this material would be from a maintenance standpoint.
Hello, my name is Robert Burns. I'm with Studio Weight Architects. I'm the architect on this project. To answer your question, Living Spaces typically uses concrete tilt-wall construction. It's an efficient, very durable construction method. That's why they use it over a masonry method. We do understand that, you know, there are design guidelines that we're trying to meet the intent of with this. This, the photos you're looking at are from a similar project that was done in Frisco, Texas. Frisco has similar design standards and this was a means to comply with their design requirements. So it creates, you know, the base, the body, and a cap for these buildings and allows, you know, a textured finish down at the ground level that pretty much wraps the entire building.
I don't have any specific problem with the look.
Yeah, it looks nice to me.
Yeah, it looks good.
May I make a motion to approve?
Is that the only item on the site plan? We've got the whole site plan here. I know we're looking at this as well, but I don't want us to forget we've got a big picture out here. Was there anything on this site plan that, if we're okay with the, it sounds like we're okay with the tilt-up concrete walls, just making sure, was there anything else specifically on here, Mr. Donovan, you had any concerns about? You need to make sure we look at or address. Parking was more than adequate? Got their parking islands? The dumpster doesn't seem to have a problem with access or getting to it or it's not a problem? Looks like it's right there where the trucks will be as well? Is that an issue or...
Yeah, they provided all the truck turn-in templates. There may be, they're able to make those movements. My understanding, and Eric can confirm, is the pickup area in the back will have some of their deliveries, but it's mostly going to be for customers coming to pick up furniture that they've purchased at the store and that'll be the primary traffic out of those loading dock areas.
Not the 18-wheelers bringing the furniture into the store?
Yeah, that's correct. They're going to use it. That will be an unload-in spot for them, but primarily, traffic coming out of there will be consumer traffic that's picking up furniture. I don't know, do you have an idea how many, like, deliveries they're getting a week?
I don't know exactly, but...
It's about the Costco, right?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, so...
18-wheelers conflicting with the local guy in his pickup truck that's there to pick up his furniture and all that, but I'm sure the, your 18-wheelers come in at certain times or... And that's the dumpsters on the very back, back there with the landscaping around there? Is that that little square back there?
That's correct.
Two dumpsters?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm good. Sorry.
That's okay.
I'll second Jenice's motion.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Ms. Fulchon? Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Big place. All right, our next item is a Valvoline Instant Oil Change. It's a site plan for a 1,462 square foot automotive motor vehicle service building on approximately 1.3 acres, Zone PCD, located along Old Las Casas Road and North Rutherford Boulevard. Valvoline developer. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and Commission. As you can see on the aerial above, the Valvoline site is on the vacant property that is also known as a PCD for this area that you saw a couple of months ago to approve the use. That particular improvement included a berm along both sides of the frontages so that it could help better screen the site. So in reviewing the site plan review for the site, it does conform to those standards. And so as you're looking at the landscape plan here, you can see that 15-foot wide minimum for the berm portion, and again, that's to help screen some of these exiting points here. Because it is a corner lot, there's not a way to orient the building to not face a particular city right of way, but it is not facing North Rutherford. And then when you look at the elevation portions, there are some comments here just to have the correct labeling, but what you'll see, basically, this will be the, kind of the ingress into the building and then this will be the exiting point that faces Old Las Casas. And then this is the portion that will face North Rutherford Boulevard. All brick and some special separation here. Staff believes that it conforms to the PCD program book as long as it's subject to all staff comments contained there in the staff report.
Any questions you have? Any questions regarding this item, site review? I think we took care of a lot of that when we worked on that landscaping and all that. I think that helped a lot for this site. If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Fulchon. Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Our next item is Kings Landing Villas, Section 2, a Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Plat for 13 lots on 9.18 acres, Zoned PRD, located along West Thompson Lane. Black Diamond Construction LLC is the developers. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones and members of the Murphysboro Planning Commission. This next application before you is the Kings Landing Villas, Section 2, Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Plat for 13 lots. You've previously reviewed this plat, I believe, last year. Since that time, Tennessee Department of Transportation has modified some of their access regulations, causing this to eliminate the access point that was originally in this location and reroute this road to where there's now a cul-de-sac that goes back and connects with the main road coming into the property. As a part of that, they had to adjust some lots and adjust some building pad locations. Staff has reviewed this plat. It is generally in good order and we would recommend that any approval be made, any approval be made subject to all staff comments.
Any questions regarding this Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Plat?
If there are none, I'll make a motion, move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Fulchon. Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Our next item is the Thomas Property, Final Plat for Five Lots on 5.41 acres, Zoned RS15, located along North Thompson Lane and East Prim Lane. Anthony James Thomas is the developer.
Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again, Chair Jones. This next application before you is a Final Plat for Five Lots, located along Thompson Lane. This plat is a little bit unique as it is adjacent to Prim Lane, which is going to require some road improvements. An option that is made available in our subdivision regulations...
Mr. Barbie, can you put the...
Is it not? Hold on. There it goes. There's the location and there's the plat. Thank you. There's the location, and there's the plat. Thank you. As you can see, it is for a total of five lots, including a future lot. This plat is actually for the four lots you see here before you. Like I was stating, in our subdivision regulations, there is an option where the planning commission can tie these future road improvements to a specific lot in the development in the future. If planning commission does feel that that is an appropriate action to take, this measure would require a specific motion to do so. Staff is asking that a note is added onto the final plat that states, "Road improvements are required in order to convert the non-buildable lot," which is circled here, "to a buildable lot of record. At the time of the recording of this plat, no habitable structures are currently contemplated to be constructed on this property, and if habitable structures are proposed, improvements to the East Prim Lane must be completed. In addition, at such time, there will need to be a replat showing the creation of Lot 5." So all of that to say that what you're looking at today are these four lots here, and then a separate motion that would tie the road improvements for East Prim Lane to that future Lot 5. Other than that, the plat's generally in good order. We would request that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments, as well as the option for the road improvements to be tied to that future Lot 5.
So our subdivision regulations require that any time there is a subdivision of land along a substandard street, that both right-of-way be dedicated and improvements to bring it up to standard be constructed with the subdivision of the land. As they propose the four lots, the four buildable lots that they have proposed, all have frontage on Thompson Lane instead of Prim Lane. And so the planning commission has the authority to grant alternatives to the regulations and the subdivision regulations. In this particular case, that's the regulation regarding the timing of the road improvements. And so we're requesting that they develop right-of-way, or that they dedicate right-of-way with this plat, but defer the road improvements. The planning commission approved the deferral of those road improvements, as Mr. Barbie stated, until the replating of the fifth lot, which they're calling non-buildable on this lot, and would have to be replatted as a buildable lot. And until such time as they plat that, which would have access on the Prim Lane, that they could defer those road improvements until that time. But as an alternative, that alternative, if you agree with it, has to be built into your motion. Has to be explicit per the subdivision regulations.
And just to confirm, East Prim Lane and the lots that are beyond these four on East Prim Lane are all county lots and a county road? East Prim is a county road?
Yes, ma'am. They are all in the county. And the only portion of Prim Lane that is in the city limits is what's adjacent to this parcel. And strangely enough, East Prim Lane and West Prim Lane do not connect. This goes back to about two or three more lots behind it that accessed East Prim Lane. And it's a very, very substandard road, very narrow.
Right. What are the improvements that they're going to do to Prim Lane?
So it would be improvements that would be on... So it wouldn't be bringing the entire road up to city standards, only what's on their side of the property. And I think Ms. Knoll is going to elaborate on that, so I don't mess it up.
Good afternoon again. I believe the improvements were to just widen, so we have at least 22 feet of pavement, so that you have at least two traffic lanes.
All lanes, okay.
Yeah.
But that is not... We're not requiring that now.
Correct.
Only if they replat and get a Lot 5.
Right.
That's what triggers the improvements to the Prim Lane.
Correct. If they want to put a new lot that has to access Prim Lane, then that access triggers those improvements. For the lots on Thompson Lane, since they're accessing Thompson Lane...
They're good.
And it's our understanding that the sale of these four lots that are going to access North Thompson Lane are going to help the applicant... Those proceeds are going to help the applicant construct those improvements at such time as he's ready to replat Lot 5.
So we need two motions? We need one motion, vote on it, and then another one?
I think you can build in approval of the alternative as a part of your motion.
Okay. So can I just ask? So is this Note 13 on this plat we're looking at, is that what you're asking us to add? Or is that really already there, and you're just circling it to point it out for us?
Oh, so it's clouded by SEC. We asked the applicants to cloud the changes. So we included that comment in the staff report, and they added it. And so that's just showing you that it was a change that was made after the initial staff comments were sent to them.
And you wouldn't end up there in that non-buildable... Would you in any way reference C. Note 13?
I think that's probably a good idea.
Because somebody will try to sell that lot right there, just like that. They'll get it replatted, they'll be so excited.
You're right. You know, in my 24 years of working here, I can't imagine that ever happening.
I know.
Maggie's got jokes today.
So anyway, if we could ask for that, I think that would be a reference.
I think that... Mr. Ahmed with SEC has nodded his acceptance of that.
Mrs. Ahmed with SEC, 815 Little Tennessee Boulevard. Yes, we can have this note on the plat itself.
Appreciate it. That'll be very helpful in the long run. Okay.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the four lots, as well as the Prim Lane improvements to trigger Lot 5, subject to all the rest of the staff comments.
That cover us?
I think so.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Fulton?
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item, and this will be the item we heard comments from Mr. Stone originally. This is Item F, and it is Racket Club Lot 1, Phase 2. Site plan for 14 pickleball courts and pro shop on 8.03 acres, zoned commercial highway, located along River Rock Boulevard and Tommy Bragg Drive. Dill Property Holdings LLC is the developer. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So this is the Racket Club, Phase 2. This does the site for the public comment that you heard earlier. So the planning commission actually approved Phase 1 of this project in October of 2023. Phase 1 included three buildings, one of which was existing, when it was approximately 28,000 square feet, and two new construction buildings, one of which was 78, approximately 7,800 square feet and 5,000 square feet, and along with the associated parking and stormwater facilities at that time. Since then, Phase 2 has come to fruition through some notification and discussion with staff. We realized there were some improvements taken place on site that hadn't been properly approved by... Through the city's planning process, what the Phase 2 includes is four indoor pickleball courts, which are located inside of the existing approximately 30,000-square-foot building on site, and then 11 new pickleball courts that were on existing tennis courts that were converted, and then as well as about a 20-foot addition to those tennis courts to increase the capacity. So this site plan addresses those items, as well as addressing some new required parking that would be associated with the pickleball court use. The applicant has been able to demonstrate that they can provide all of the parking on site. That increased the required parking from approximately 149 spaces to 175 overall. For Phase 2, it was 60 required spaces. They've provided 53 new spaces, and there was a bank of too many spaces in Phase 1, where they're pulling those additional seven spaces. So they still exceed our parking requirements. Along with the pickleball and parking improvements that are going to be associated with Phase 2, they are extending the buffer along... The Type D buffer along the property line with River Chase condominiums to the north. That buffer includes a Type D fence, as well as three layers of evergreen trees and shrubbery within that buffer area. You'll note in your staff report that there was initially a building that was identified as a pro shop. That has since been changed to equipment storage. If it were to be used as a pro shop, we would need to address that through a site plan. They've indicated that that's not what it's intended to be used for. They're going to use it as equipment storage. But just because of that kind of swap, if it were to be used as a pro shop, we would need to account for it from a parking standpoint. The major concern that staff had with this project was related to the photometric plans with neighboring properties and light bleed over. We allow a half-a-foot handle at the property line. We've been through several iterations with the applicant. We have finally gotten an iteration that resolves the half-a-foot handle at the property line issue. Oops. But where we were looking at is along this northern property line in particular, because we don't typically address the area where it bleeds into public right-of-way, where you would see street lighting anyway. If you look there, all of those foot handle readings fall within permitted range for the zoning ordinance, kind of as a safeguard. And since there has been some kind of... We've been through several iterations. Some of them didn't look like they were fully possible. Staff does want to see the inputs to this site and has requested that as a condition of approval, that we get to see those inputs, make sure as far as the heights, the cutoffs, the angle of the lights, all adequately reflect what was going into this photometric plan, so that we're not causing any effects on the neighboring property owner, since that is a residential property at the edge of this commercial development. So as far as the staff comments that are listed in the staff report, Item 3, 5, and 6 can all be struck. 1 and 2 would only be required if that equipment shed is converted to a pro shop. I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning commission may have on this item. And Mr. Huddleston is here as well, who's representing the applicant, and he can answer any questions as well.
Well, we do have a lot of questions to address on this. I guess there's nothing you can do about the fact that a lot of work that was done on this project without... I'm sure you all run into this on a... I mean, I hope not regular, but you run into this, people doing work on properties without going through the proper channels and getting things approved ahead of time. So we, I guess, at this point are doing the best we can to address the issue. He is now going through the proper channels, and we are trying to make right as many of the things that have been done already as possible. So we are now looking at a plan that shows 11 pickleball courts, as opposed to it was only going to be four to begin with, or the four indoor? Or anyway, it's different. This is what he's intending now. What we're looking at on our screens right now is what we're being expected to approve. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the 11 pickleball courts are already there, right?
Those are existing, right?
That he has already done.
Those are existing in place as we speak today. And Mr. Newman, if you feel like you need to jump in here, what we have asked the applicant to do is no lights until there is an approved photometric plan. So they are... The courts are in use to a limited degree, but none of the lights are permitted to be turned on while this body is reviewing it and given final approvals.
And what about the buffering and landscaping? Is any of the landscaping there at all, anything?
So none of that is currently installed. The front two buildings, the new two buildings out front are currently under construction. So they've started Phase 1. None of that buffering is installed that I was aware of at this time. Something could have changed there that Mr. Huddleston may know about, or Mr. Dill. But I'm not aware that any of the other buffering has been installed right now, are currently because of the site being under construction.
So is the site already actively in use without a C of O?
Hey, Ben, can you help? Thank you.
So the tennis courts were already there, and they have been there for a long period of time, since the '80s, I understand. Mr. Dill could have gone in and used the tennis courts anyway, could have restripped those without a site plan, and could have used those. So in talking with the president of the HOA, you know, we looked at what could Mr. Dill do to help resolve this issue until we move forward fully with a site plan approved by the planning commission. And so we discussed that no lights being used, since I think the lights that were there previously were knocked down in a storm. Mr. Dill replaced those with new lights, and at that time, put in the additional concrete, which allowed the expanded use of those pickleball courts. So we allowed them to use those, just no lighting until this was done. The buffer, and we discussed putting a buffer in at that time, but the buffering, is my understanding, is in drainage area that would have to all be pulled out, and then a fence get put back in. So in this area here. And this area did have some trees that were very mature, white pine trees, very large. Some of them were already dead or in the process of dying, and that was another issue with the HOA, is that those were falling into some drainage on their side as well. And so I think it was a good thing to have those gone in the long scheme of things, but having something replaced there as far as the buffering and then a fence was something that we do want to see.
Going back to the tennis courts, am I mistaken? There was more tennis courts there originally, right? And a previous owner took the extra tennis courts out, right?
Yeah. So there was where the 5,000-square-foot retail building was, there was what looked like a natural surface court there at some point. That's what I was able to discern from all the aerial imagery that we have.
There were eight courts total, correct? And there were tournaments on site for tennis on that site?
I'm not sure about the tournaments. I do know there were some additional courts that we can see in prior imagery.
Was it four tennis courts? Was it four tennis courts?
Looks like it was, looking at the 2004 aerial photography, and then there was the four tennis courts where... Excuse me, where the pickleball courts are located now, and then it looks like due north of the large old racket club building that's still there, there were three courts there.
Seven, not eight.
Sorry?
There were seven, not eight. But there were more courts than just these right here.
That's what I'm seeing on the aerial.
I have a question. Was it always... Because you mentioned that there used to be tournaments there. Was the intention of this to always be for private tournament use, or was it for neighborhood
So my, my question, so the level of pickleball courts was not approved?
So they, they were not approved on that Phase One site plan. It had this portion of the site listed as future development except for stormwater facilities that were being built with Phase One.
But they were existing courts. He just restripped it, correct? Except for 25.
And added some additional, there was.
So he did add a little bit to it. He widened it out.
Yeah, on the, the, on this very last court, there was about 15 feet added to that end.
So let me ask you this, since there were three clay court, or dirt courts, or whatever, clay courts or dirt courts, if they all would have been pickleball courts, we would have a net less pickleball courts than we would have had tennis courts, correct?
What?
There, if you just took seven tennis courts and converted them to pickleball courts, these 11 pickleball courts are le, take up less room than seven tennis courts. I think that math is correct.
Well, less space, yes.
Right. Right.
Is that relevant to an argument or something?
There were already seven tennis courts, which means there could have been 14 pickleball courts. And there's only 11 pickleball courts. So there's le, actually less.
Did there used to be a row of trees there? Is that what you were saying originally? And then he took them out whenever he built the, when he restripped it and put the pickleball courts in, the trees came out? Is that correct?
Are you Mr. Dill? Yes, please come up.
No, stay here.
Go ahead and state your name and address. Thank you, Mr. Dill.
We were converting those into pickleball courts at the time, which is in the same, it doesn't, there's nothing that shows that you have to do anything. We already had, we already had approval. It's been approved to be a racket club for probably as long as I've been alive. What happened was in the middle of it, a storm came through and blew the pine trees down. Well, what it did was it ripped all the fence that was out. And if you take, and it ripped the light poles that were there out. When it rips a light pole out, it takes a lot of asphalt and a lot of dirt out too. So at that point, yes, we added 15 foot to the end of it because we had to redo the fence. We also had to redo all the trees along the side that connects to the condominiums or.
That was one thing I, I had a question about on those trees. And I, I understand the trees were in bad shape anyway, but were those trees on your property or on the neighboring property?
They were on our property.
They were your trees?
There is occasional, I don't know who put them in, but there would be, they kind of did, some of them went. But the ones that fell were on our property.
Okay.
Must have been a big storm.
Well, they were.
We've got a lot of trees in the light pole.
Trees were not in good health, so they probably fell easily.
Yeah, I mean, when the trees, the light pole were tied to the trees, I mean, to the, to the fence. And when the, when a 100-foot tree falls on a fence, the light pole comes with it. So.
Right.
It was, and then that damage of trying to pull a 100-foot tree, we had to repair the other end of it. So it's, it's not, we weren't just, I mean, we were allowed to have pickleball courts on there. It wasn't, it wasn't a rezoning issue.
While you were there, you went ahead and widened it out.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we shouldn't have added 15 foot to the end of it. But we also had, we had to fix the concrete no matter what.
So what's the plan for the replanning? I guess, what's, what is it showing right now as far as that buffer behind the pickleball courts?
So it's an extension of the, the type D buffer. Let me zoom in here.
Type D buffer?
So you've got three rows of plantings, they're, they're evergreens, and then kind of sandwiched in between these is where that fence is located.
And not, to be clear, none of this is there per, currently?
No, ma'am. All that's there currently is the pickleball courts.
Okay, so during, so, okay. Just, so we will be adding, we want to address, we want to address the concerns of the people that live there. We will be adding all of this buffering. They will be adding all this buffering.
And fence, right?
Yeah, and fence.
Yes. How tall of a fence?
It is six feet.
Chain link?
Uh, it is a privacy fence. Vinyl privacy fence. And that's a continuation of what, what was approved in Phase One.
What was there when it was an active racket club that, like I said, there were tournaments at? So this was an active racket ball club? So what?
It was just the pine trees.
Just the pine trees?
Yeah, I bet the pine trees were probably younger.
Yeah, they were young. They were little.
They were probably healthy.
Right.
And they probably acted as a pretty good buffer.
So this is, be even more sufficient than was already there? Now, the one concern I do have is the, I don't remember there being PA systems and all that out on the courts to, that would have been 25 foot off of residents. What can we do to mitigate the sound pollution going over your neighbors?
So they'll, they'll have staff there. I mean, and they'll, they'll just have to be a part of that, making sure that they're not, you know. And pickleball people aren't normally a bunch of crazy crowd. I mean, I think that they've.
I don't know about that. I've seen some crazy.
I mean, they're most, I mean, first time I played pickleball, I got beat by two 80-year-olds. So they're not really the people we think that are.
Sure.
You know, making a lot of racket and, and kind of thing.
But the speakers is what.
Yeah, I mean, they'll just have, they'll just have to.
He's referring to that more than anything. I mean.
Just like any other considerable neighbor, they're going to have to, you know, consider their neighbors.
I kind of, I kind of look at, I mean, this, this place has been there since the seventies or eighties. The, the neighborhood was put in in 2005 or six, somewhere in that range. Uh, I don't know if that's exactly right, but some, somewhere around there.
And there was a PA system because we took down all the old megaphone type.
I mean, it's been 25, 30 years ago.
Yeah, they were really old.
Have there been a?
But they weren't probably being operated, I wouldn't assume, that took over.
I'm looking at a 1995 aerial photograph, and the neighborhood to the north has been there at least, at least since 95.
Yeah, so that, it was an active club and that neighborhood was there at the same time.
Right, so my question, what were the past operating hours? And what are the, what are going to be the operating hours right now for pickleball? What are the operating hours?
Seven to 10.
Seven to 10.
And 10 o'clock.
Is that Monday through Sunday?
Uh, yes.
Is that just because of Norris ordinance? I mean, the city Norris ordinance is, I think, isn't that 10 o'clock?
I know it's seven.
I'm not certain.
I don't know when it ends.
Yeah, it's seven to 10.
So have you adjusted your hours to 10 o'clock at night since, since you get into pickleball?
Oh, yeah. I mean, they would love to play all night long, but we have to.
I know, but what was the hours prior to you adding this pickleball court? What were your hours?
I mean, we weren't using it as, I mean, it was there as tennis courts, but we weren't.
Yeah, that was a prior. It wasn't being utilized.
That was a prior owner.
I get that, but I mean, now we got 11 courts and we got.
Man, what's, what's the Norris ordinance for Sunday?
It's the same.
Even on Sunday?
And I think the, the, I mean, I think it's probably been years since the tennis courts have been utilized. I think they've probably been, probably been, what, probably at least five, 10 years since?
It's been at least five or 10 years.
I think to, to sum up what everybody's saying here, I feel for the property owners next door, because even though this was a present facility, it wasn't maybe a functional facility, or the use wasn't as intensive as it has now become. So yeah, if I live in that neighborhood next door, I'm going to be pretty mad too, because suddenly it's very, very loud. Mr. Dill, hopefully you can understand that these people are just frustrated, because suddenly it's very loud.
I understand they're frustrated, but we also have had just as many people come to us and say, we're excited about this. We like this idea. We're 55 and up, we need a hobby. Pickleball sounds like a good hobby. You know, we're planning on putting a coffee shop, they all get to walk the coffee shop to the river. So we have just as many, if not more, people that are excited about the product than are disappointed about it.
For me, I didn't like the fact that you added this 15 feet to your tennis court without going through the proper channels.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't think adding 15 foot was going to be an issue. But I see now it was, so I apologize.
I think, you know, the development originally obviously existed next door. I mean, the River Chase condominiums and the River Chase racket club were in existence, both operating full capacity in the nineties.
Early 2000s.
And so I, I do believe they can be good neighbors. But I think what's missing now is really the buffering.
Yeah.
And I think if that buffering gets installed as you have it shown, and not sloppily, and not randomly, but very specifically like you're showing it here, and the fence gets installed, and you do your best job to be a good neighbor to the people that have at one time lived next to something just like this, that operated just like this, that they didn't have to deal with all the issues. Now, I realize they're not used to it right now. They may not have been the people living there when it operated like that in the nineties. But we know it can, they can coexist and, and happily, because they were all new developments at that time. I think we just, we need some type of restriction maybe on the sound.
Yeah, I think that, I think.
How we deal with that.
The only idea I had was the.
A barrier wall.
Sound barrier walls, like on Joby Jackson, the Swanson Development that they did with Magnolia Trace, that existence subdivision that's there. They put up that wall right there to keep the sound out. So you have buffering and the wall. It's pretty tall. I mean, here's a picture of it.
It might be 16 feet.
That's on Google Earth. So I mean, that's it right there. See, that's an existing residential subdivision for Magnolia.
I've got it pulled up too. Also, have you addressed the drainage issue? Because isn't there some additional flooding going on with, with what you have going on now? So it's no, no flooding issue?
The landscaping wasn't in a drainage, did that, was that said somewhere along the way?
So there, this was a, this landscape buffer was initially proposed as a, to be a drainage swell in the prior phase. And Ms. Noel can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is planned to be piped now with some catch basins to pipe it to the detention pond, which is the, the location on what you're seeing in the lower right-hand corner of the screen.
And is that the developer's responsibility or the city's?
That is the, it is on private property. It is the developer's responsibility.
Okay. You're aware of that, Mr. Dill.
We're already working on that.
Okay.
So you do have a drainage issue?
No, we don't have a drainage issue.
Well, he's got to deal with that drainage ditch right down through there, but that's what he's, they're working on that.
That storm is private. It will be private storm. I've, I've confirmed the Norris ordinance is 7 a.m. to 10 p.m., seven days a week. So he's operating within the scope of the city Norris ordinance.
Mr. Stone, you will not, you will not get to speak again. That's the way it works with the public hearing. So please have a seat.
Some of the statements he's making are incorrect.
But, Mr. Stone, have a seat, please.
What's the, what chance depending on the, the barrier wall for the sound? What's the general consensus on it?
I think if, actually, I think a six-foot fence goes a long way. The sound is from the impact of the ball on the ground, and then that sound's going to realistically travel at ground level. I know the taller fence really.
And what's being put in is a lot more than what was already there when the two, the neighborhood and the racket club worked, were both there at the same time.
Yeah.
Flowing and going.
And, you know, I haven't been on the planning commission for very long, but if I owned a bunch of tennis courts, I would think I could probably just make them pickleball courts and pour some concrete, and it wouldn't be a big deal. So I kind of understand.
I'm, I'm fine with them becoming the pickleball courts, but I, I don't know that the fence, I think while we're here, we should really consider the sound barrier wall.
What about eight?
And also light, how much more?
Can I, I'm so sorry. Can I?
Yeah, go ahead. Go, you got the floor.
Okay. Because I think the argument is, y'all keep coming back to, it used to be, it's always been a tennis facility, which I totally get. But the PA systems, the pickleball tournaments that are coming here are probably a higher intensity than they've had in a tennis court. Like, y'all, y'all know what pickleball is like, and what the people are like, and they're really big fans. And if these PA systems are playing loud music all day, I mean, I feel for these people. I used to live right behind Blackman High School, and I didn't expect Saturday to have cross-country tournaments start at 7 a.m. And the black chain link or black privacy fence maybe just isn't quite enough. So I think while we're here and it's in front of us and we have the opportunity, I'm with Tristan, I think we should consider a more sufficient sound barrier so that we don't have to come back in a year or two and say, wow, I really wish we put a sound barrier. The trees are going to take a while to grow. They may get torn down again or by a storm, or there may, they may be a bug infestation that wipes them out for a while. I mean, anything we can do to protect the quality of life for the landowners next door, I think is a reasonable request.
So like six foot takes care of the balls and noise of the racket balls hitting?
Right. Because sounds.
Just the speakers is the.
And just maybe try to be a good neighbor and don't have PA systems blasting.
Along with that.
I know, but he can try.
I agree that we, we should address the, the sound in, at the barrier, but also I'm concerned about the lights will go along with that. So you got noise and bright lights. Have you did a photometric of your lights?
Well, they're not putting, they're not putting lights on it until they get the full photometric plan, right? Correct?
We have.
Part of our requirement.
He said they're going to review the inputs to make sure.
So, yeah, we do have a full photometric plan currently. It is at less than a half a foot handle, which is what's required of our ordinance at the property line. We do want a chance to review the inputs so that we know the inputs are, the lights that they are putting up, and that everything matches up, and we're getting an accurate photometric plan.
Good.
So there will be lights? Right?
Yes.
And there were lights prior.
Yeah.
So did we add any more lights than the existing lights were there?
Oh, good question.
Or did the lights operate?
What's that?
Did the lights operate previously?
Yes, they did. But we, we called before we moved anywhere, we had begun to change the lights out.
So we did add more lights?
So you can add more light and not add more light. So the number of lights is irrelevant to the situation. What's relevant is how much light the light puts off. So I can put 100 watt bulb in there or 60 watt, or 250 watt bulbs, and I'm still going to get 100 watts. So yes, there are more lights, but they're not causing any more light, light pollution to the neighbor. It's probably a lot less than what was there originally, because what was there originally, it didn't care where the, it was, yeah.
Lot of Tommy.
Plans at the time.
Lot of street light up there.
I definitely understand that. I'm just asking from the planning department, did he add more lights? Are y'all good with the lights that he added?
So, so the, the photometric that they're currently presenting is in the scope of our specific zoning ordinance. What we want to sure, ensure, because we've been through at this point probably eight iterations of this, that the specs that are going into generating that photometric plan are correct. So we have a photometric plan. It is in order with our ordinance, but we want to see the inputs to ensure that, that everything is being.
You want to check the math on it, right?
Essentially, yes.
So let, let me ask you this to help out with the light thing. With the photometric plan, we're going to the new city ordinance, just like the Sequel Soccer Park has and everything like that. I would assume that's got a lot less light bleed than those old lights that were up there before. They would have bled a lot more than a half a candle, correct?
You know, not, not knowing what, what was up there and the specifications on them, I wouldn't want to speak to that.
Just dream of what was put up in 1980, 1990.
Yeah.
It was a lot of light.
They were probably a much different light than he has installed today.
Yeah.
If possible, Mr. Dill, could you have a seat? I'd like Mr. Huddleston to come up and answer a few questions. Because I think we kind of got, everybody else was, was talking, but that's your job. That's what you get paid for, right, Mr. Huddleston?
If I get paid.
Um, we, everyone's made really good points about parking, about lights and sound barriers and all those things, and I think we're going to continue to consider those. It looks adequately parked based on the zoning ordinance, just based on pure numbers. But I have concerns about big tournaments coming in. What is the plan for overflow parking realistically? I know you're going to say, oh, it's adequately parked. I, I agree with you according to zoning ordinance.
It is adequately, adequately parked. In fact, we've included parking for the bleachers as well.
Which, do you mean just in numbers or a specific section?
There's two, there's two sets of bleachers on either side of that westernmost court, on either end of that westernmost court. Do you see them?
Yes, yes, sir.
And we've even added parking for that. But, and that's required in the zoning ordinance.
This gray area just below that that says proposed concrete sidewalk, the gray area
above that, that's parking there, too, right?
Are you talking about here?
Um, no, not, well, no.
Can you go to the site plan?
Yeah, go to the site plan if you don't mind. There we go.
Yes, but those gray areas are more parking.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's just a different angle, I guess. I'm looking at a different version. Which version are you looking at?
No, he's on a different sheet than you are.
Yeah, which sheet are you on? There we go. Okay. So, and then all that to the left is parking, too, correct?
Yeah, this, this area is additional parking, as well as this area. That was not included in Phase One. I believe the master plan is in here, and I can give you a overview of, here's the entire site.
So the dark gray is what's proposed right now, right?
That area that's currently circled is what is proposed new as part of Phase Two. And then you have parking here, here, and in front of the buildings, that is all in Phase One.
What's the light gray to the right, to the east? The shaded little road and parking?
This area here-
That's what I was asking. That's what I'm trying to ask now.
Yeah, what is that? Is that Phase Three or something, or what is that?
So that, that's what's included in their master plan to show what could potentially be in future expansion, but that would need to come back before this body for site plan approval, before it could be built.
But that looks like it would be more parking, and maybe a restaurant, but more parking, in other words.
Correct.
Okay.
And pickleball courts.
Are you good with this, the parking, then?
Yeah, I mean, the numbers look good. I just want to make, I guess my concern is, when the parking lots get full, are they going to be parking along the side of Tommy Bragg? And is there room on Tommy Bragg for that?
Okay.
It's Tommy, I don't, I am not familiar with Tommy Bragg.
No, there's a sidewalk on Tommy-
Yeah, Tommy Bragg's got-
You can't park on the street.
Right.
It's curb and gutter and sidewalk.
I mean, for all the spectators.
Yeah, that's what she's on.
Are you kidding? Have you seen on TV there? A lot of people come to this stuff.
All right. Revisiting the sound, is it possible to put a decibel reader on the property line to read like 53 decibels? That way we can keep a, if we get a lot of noise complaints, we can keep track of the decibels to say, hey, we're, we're exceeding 53 decibels across the line, 58 decibels across the line. That way we know there's a noise issue. We can trigger, hey, we need to do something about the noise issue.
And are you measuring both of them? Like the speaker?
Right. Music, music-
Not just the sound-
Not just the sound of the ball, but the sound of the PA system, the sound of the ball, everything. That way we know if-
Phase Three would go in, we could-
We could do something about that, right?
Something more than-
Yeah, right.
So we can either do a whole six-foot fence now, or eight-foot fence now.
Right.
And knowing that if it's not adequate, we have to come back and do the-
Do a sound wall, right?
Sound wall.
Right. That way we're being good neighbors to the people that live behind about this, the, the noise coming across.
Mr. Wright, may I, may I clarify something about the noise ordinance? Is that seven to 10, or 10 to 7, excuse me, is where the lower decibel levels kick in. But I believe from 24 hours a day, there are maximum decibel levels.
Correct.
So, so anytime someone feels that there has been a violation, if there's, if there is amplified noise that they feel is, is exceeding what the limits of those noise ordinance are, they can call the police department and file a complaint.
And if we had decibel readers, we could then go, at this time, what was the decibel reading at the property line? And we would know if we're getting noise, to, over the exceeding noise pollution of what the-
Who's going to put the decibel readers up?
Mr. Dill.
Is he going to notify us if it goes over?
We'll get noise complaint calls, and then we can-
Then we can cross-reference that.
Cross-reference.
I think it's just a question of, you know, do we require a six-foot fence right now or eight-foot fence right now, knowing that we're thinking we may require a-
I think you just do the sound barrier wall. That's my opinion. I don't, I mean, I would just say do that now, and just, it's done.
That's where I'm at, because six-foot or eight-foot, I mean, are we worried about people jumping it? What's the two feet give us? Like, I-
I just feel like it's accomplishing two birds, one stone.
I agree.
It's giving the privacy, but it's also helping the sound.
So what happens if you put an eight-foot sound barrier fence up, and you're still exceeding the, the 58s?
Then it would have been a heck of a lot louder if it wasn't there.
Yeah. But then what's the next resolution?
It depends on the wall versus just a fence.
Yeah. Well, if I could-
Please.
Uh, sound travels in a state line, a straight line. So as long as, let's just say this is a privacy fence right here, and we're playing pickleball over here. That noise is going to go straight, and it's going to continue up. All right? If it's a six-foot wall or a, or an eight-foot fence, but as long as the privacy fence is solid, the sound is going to go over it. And so it doesn't matter if it's a wall or a privacy fence, as long as it's solid. And I asked Mr. Dill, he said he would go to an eight-foot fence. Which means-
All right, we're bringing, I'm going to bring up another question. How tall are the speakers on the PA system? Are they 20-foot tall?
Well, I don't, I don't know, but-
Because if we're going straight line, I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying, if they're 20-foot tall, it's just, right? So I mean, it doesn't matter if we put a 10-foot fence on it, for a PA system.
Exactly. So, you know, if the PA system is generating the decibel level that's above the wall, then, you know, it's all come, come there.
He can just get the police call it on him every day.
I'm, I'm more concerned with the PA system than the pickleball.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't really care about the wall.
Once the wall's in the pickleball thing, it's not going to be a big deal. But the PA system, I mean, that, that can be loud.
Especially if it's on a tripod.
7:00 a.m. on a Sunday morning.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not going to be happy about it, if I live there.
But I think just the neighbors will just call the police on him over and over every day, until he turns it down.
Yeah, well, we don't, we don't, we're not starting out.
And that's out of our jurisdiction.
So for staff, as far as the, the speakers, it's going to be mounted, should we, could we put in that they be pointed quartz, the quartz, and away from the condos?
The speakers are in right now, correct?
No, there's no speakers in. They just, they use the portable, just like you buy from them.
So I'm, I'm just trying to get a resolution so we can get, you know, we want to figure out how to build good neighbor, sound barrier, position of speakers and lights. That's, that's my deal.
Are there plans to put-
We get that, we point them away from the neighbor.
In this plan, it, there are going to be proposed speakers, or are you going to continue to use like the portable one?
It's not a civil issue, civil engineering issue, so I'm not, I don't show them my plans.
No, I know, I was, I was really-
You're talking to him.
Yeah, okay. Really wanted, well, he was saying that right now, you can carry around like a little mobile-
Mr. Dill, you want to come back up for a second? Mr. Dill, you want to come back up for a second, please? Thank you.
Kind of making exercise.
Exactly.
Amen.
No problem. Right now, they use a portable one.
Right.
But, I mean, there's no problem with aiming them away, because, I mean, everybody would be away from the-
I think even aiming them, I think there needs to be a decibel reader.
I like to see them aimed, also, I would like to see that while we're in the interim of them using a portable, they should be able to be facing a certain way.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that.
I'm just trying to figure out how we get to be a good neighbors, and let's move on. That's, that's where I'm at.
And I'm like Jamie, I'm sympathetic to the neighbors, because, yes, this has been a racket club forever, but it hadn't been for, like Mr. Promley said, five or 10 years. So if you're a new neighbor, you may not even realize that there was a racket club next door when you bought your property.
It's probably getting a lot more attention right now than it ever has, too.
My real estate agent had told me that field was always going to be-
That's right.
They could never do-
Argue that guy who bought something downtown beside the fairgrounds in Nashville saw a racetrack there, and there's no races there. Uh, but same type of thing. But I, I think I'm going to make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments, adding a decibel reader at the property line.
At whose expense?
At the developer's expense.
Hold on.
Second.
And does, does, is the fence listed on here as a six-foot prophecy fence?
Yeah.
So that's covered.
Yeah.
But he agreed to do an eight-foot.
It's all in there.
Yeah. He agreed to do an eight-foot fence.
If the planning commission wants that, that should be part of the motion, then.
All right, abandon eight-foot fence.
Add solid, like vinyl, right?
Solid.
Do you want the eight-foot fence along the entire property, or do you want it just backing the, the quartz?
Well, all the way, I think it has to be-
It's going to have to go along the whole property, wouldn't it?
Not just by the quartz.
Yeah, it's going to have to go along the whole property, I would think, because the rest, it's all residential.
The whole property or whole northern border?
Northern border.
Northern. Oh, I would say along Phase Two, when, I mean, Phase One's already been approved six feet.
I, I can-
That'll take care of course.
From the new park in, the new park in that's being added-
Right.
Down to the end-
Yeah.
Of the last court.
Eight-foot fence is on Phase Two is part of the motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Viljan?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Sustained.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. So, one abstention? All right. Motion passes. Okay. That concludes our plaques and plans. Move on to new business. We have one item there that we, uh, it's a zoning application to amend the existing PCD zoning, Dejarnet Place PCD, on approximately 23.7 acres, located along Dejarnet Lane, Swanson Developments LP is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon again, Chair Jones and Commission. This particular project site, as you can see on the aerial, has been under development for a while. It was actually approved back in 2007, and this is the first time it's come for a plan development amendment. As part of the overall plan, I did include the current plan set for your reference, and really the focus on this is three components. So one, there's actually, has been constructed two interior roadways that were going to be private drives in the past, and I guess, over the years, when we approved some plat maps, these were approved as city streets, with the intent that potentially, as development occurred to the west of the site, it potentially could be tied in through the site and into the state farms, if that ever got redeveloped through that process. The other thing that we had looked at is, this particular project site is north easterly of our existing city airport runways. And so trying to look at the long-term impacts, what that could affect, we involved our Chad Burkey with our airport and our consulting firm, Barge, to take a look at that. So if you can imagine, the north on this map is actually to the right. So to orient it north, you would have to rotate that drawing. So here, on this side, is where your runways are, and they have something called a clear zone that you stay out of for any building construction. And then as you get a particular distance away, there are some height limitations that they want you to stay out of. So here, we have looked at, basically, should the airport ever want to extend to be a full 5,000 feet, which in the past it had looked at, how can we protect those zones? So here, along the frontage, as we were working with Swansons, we had looked at putting what is called an navigation easement, and that's basically a protective zoning that limits any kind of heights of shrubberies, pole lights, buildings, those sort of things in the building itself. So as you're looking at the particular property, that area is really limited from Dejarnet, and then this A-B section would be a 30-foot height limitation from the particular elevation. So should that elevation be modified slightly, the plan development's written to be based on those, because that's what FAA looks at for this site. Then the next two sections, the height limitation can go a little bit further to a 35-foot, and then really, when you get back to this E, you're at a 45-foot standard, which I believe the current maximum is. So we did make some updates to the plan book. There are still a couple of them, I think, a couple of the pages that need to make sure that they're consistent with one another through that. The other thing that they looked at doing was, and their initial intent was to look at the use tables. So here, for each of those kind of three areas, as you go to the north, highlighted in yellow are those new uses or prohibited uses that they've included. The big ones here, under the prohibited ones, again, as we were looking at FAA, anything with an institutional group assembly, which would be like 50 persons plus, they really wanted to stay away from fueling, obviously, if there's an accident. And vape shops is almost going in all of our plan developments that we see moving forward. The past development did include a potential indoor and outdoor storage area here. The applicant is looking at wanting to keep that particular element to their plan book. However, back in the day, we would allow chip and seal. Here, we do not have a chip and seal allowance. And then, thirdly, the main thing that they're looking at is just conforming to our existing design guidelines that apply really citywide, and layouts as the projects develop. Previously, they actually had layouts of buildings and those kinds of things in place, because we didn't really talk about heights, other than a one-story building or a two-story building. So this gives them flexibility in the future. And the thing for us is that all of the height limitations need to apply to anything and everything that's going up in the air. So rooftop equipment, antennas, fixtures, we wanted to get that in here. So all in all, I think the project's moving forward well. We believe it's ready to be set for a public hearing, and we ask that that public hearing would be set for your, I want to say, it's June, or 4th, planning commission date. And if you have any questions, we wanted to just give you a broad brush of this, and you'll have really the program book and the prior program book, should you want to see a little bit more specifics, but that's at a very high level, the main changes in this PCD amendment. And I was going to say, and Chris McGuire with Huddleston is in the back, who's leading the charge for the applicant.
Okay, just anybody have any questions before we schedule a public hearing?
Move to schedule the public hearing for June 4th.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Viljan?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Thank you, Commission. Then, in our staff reports and other business, do we want to do the one item from the consent agenda first?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll be real quick with that. That's for the, the two-lot plat for the Chipotle, the Dutch Brothers, along the east side of North Rutherford Boulevard.
Thank you, Commission. Then, in our staff reports and other business, do we want to do the one item from the consent agenda first?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll be real quick with that. That's for the two-lot plat for the Chipotle, the Dutch Brothers, along the east side of North Rutherford Boulevard. There's just a minor change to planning commission, or planning department staff comment number three. It says that the preliminary plat improvements, including installing stormwater, landscaping, and fencing along the eastern boundary of both lots, must be complete before plat recording. That should say, must be complete before the issuance of the first C of O. The applicant brought that to our attention, and we're in agreement with that. It accomplishes what we need to accomplish. So we would ask that you approve that plat, subject to all staff comments, including that modification to comment number three from the planning department.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Viljan?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Next, we have a monthly update from our, Mr. Ben Newman, Director of Planning and Land Management.
Thank you, Chair Jones and members of planning commission. I hate that this is my first one on such a long meeting, so I'll try to be short, but what this is intended to do is give you a little bit more of what we have going on in the planning department, so you see, other than just what you see presented in front of you, you know, some of the other things that we work on daily, monthly, and things that we have planned for the future. So this will be the, you know, best five minutes of your life today, and probably the least argumentative, so. So what I want to talk about is some of our internal projects that we have going on, some of the future projects that we see coming and expect to take place, look a little bit at the data that we have, and then just a little snippet of some department administration things that we have going on. So some of the internal projects, if you remember, the CCO update, last year, we went on a ride around, looked at some different developments in the CCO, had a joint planning council meeting, planning commission and council meeting. We got a lot of feedback from both groups. We've had a lot of internal meetings to put that into some text amendments. We're working through that, and we hope to have something back that you can look at within the next 45 to 60 days. City Works, of course, a lot of you may know what that is, some of you don't, but that's, we're looking at going into City Works, it'll help with communication with our customers, keeping things a little more streamlined, taking paper out of our equation as much as we can. Codes should be going into that at the end of this month, or maybe the first of next month. Planning, we're a little bit further behind, since they started through that City Works implementation before us. So I don't really have a clear date, but we will start implementing portions of that probably as we complete some of our processes. Design guideline updates, design guidelines were passed and put in place in 2017, and since that time, our community's changed. Those design guidelines really need to be updated, and so we're meeting with stakeholders, people in different areas that work in home building subdivisions and industrial. We have architect, we have an engineer, or two engineers in that group, in the stakeholder group, and we're meeting to continue to move that forward so that we can update that as our community evolves. We've had three meetings so far. Those have gone really well. We're looking at open spaces, formal open space, what that looks like in certain areas, what it looks like with industrial. So we'll continue to move, and have something to bring for action on that as well in the future. Cherry Lane Corridor and the land use study, that's a much larger project that we're looking at, a lot of stakeholders involved here. And so just brief history, Cherry Lane, as you can see, this yellow line here on the page, is the proposed layout for future Cherry Lane. We have a lot of right-of-way that we've taken, that we already have in that, but that goes from, as you can see over here, and it goes down to 840 through the Hoard property here, crosses Broad, down through the Waldron property, and then over to 24. This was really kicked off by not knowing what type of connection Cherry Lane would have with I-24. We thought we would have a full interchange in the past. T-Dog came to us and said, "There's this new choice lanes thing coming through." That changed what may be there. We may have a choice lanes connection, we may have a full regular interchange there, or we may just have a flyover. So that, depending on which one of those things happens, will really determine what happens to a large extent to the area that you see outlined in white on the screen. So we're looking at land use, what happens with the land use, depending on what happens there, how does our, how do our natural resources get affected, how does transportation get affected, infrastructure, sewer, and all of those things. So we are, we are still in the process of moving that forward. We've assembled our stakeholder groups, we are in the process of data collection and scoping what, how much data we need, and so there's a lot that goes into it, and we'll have some good outputs as a result. Some future projects that we're looking at, entertainment district overlay, and what this is really, is it allows the sports authority that's being created to bring in some additional revenue in the form of advertising. So that's something that we'll have to take a look at and create. South Church overlay is another future project that we expect to start this year, and that's really to help guide the future development down South Church, looking at things such as setbacks, to really just make sure that we're helping all the opportunities that come along with that development. So looking at the data, you know, this helps us determine what we can expect in the future, types of growth, or not types, but the amount of growth that we have coming in. So site plans, just looking at those, you know, they're down February, January, February, and March as compared to 24. Submittals are down from last year as well. You can see that we had 40 in 24, we had 28 in March. The public records requests are kind of flat, a little bit up, so that gives us an indication of what people are looking at in the future and what we can expect to bring to us based on what they're interested in. And then due diligence meetings, that's also another indicator of some of these others that come down the road. So those are down a little bit, too, 27 from last year in March, down to 18. They were about the same, if you look back, January and February, not too much change there. So little bit of department administration, you know, we had three project engineers. Katie Knoll is the only one that we have right now. We had two engineers that left. They actually came to us from Metro after they left a couple of years ago. Metro reorganized, changed their pay structure a little bit, and then recruited them back, and they went. So we've been without those two engineers. We have some other, another engineering firm helping us with site plan review on that. And then we just extended an offer to an engineer who's accepted the position, so he should be starting next month, and then we will still have the one position that we're still searching. Administrative staff, our medical leave, that if you remember, Ms. Jaco is typically here, and she's not been here for the last month or so. She's also the one who updates our numbers, so that's why I only, I stopped at March, because we didn't have, we didn't have all those compiled for April. But been doing really well. Rest of our staff has really chipped in and done a good job. Ashley here has done a good job. She stepped up and taken on some of those functions, and Secandras Davis in our office as well has stepped up and done a good job. So the last item I have is our archive files. We have a tremendous amount of paper files, and some of these are huge. They're folded up nicely in folders. We store them in any location that we can find in City Hall, and I've found more and more of them scattered throughout, and so we are, we've cataloged that as far as how much we have. We are looking to move that over to the MED building. It's conditioned, there's adequate room over there. We have some files, file cabinets, rolling file cabinets, we've already moved. And then in July, mid-July, should have the rest of filing cabinets available, and then we'll get all of our archive files and transport them over there. And that really helps us with public record requests. Right now, our files are scattered and in different locations, and so when we get a request for an older file, it's really hard to find that, just find where it's located in the building. So they'll all be in one space, so it'll make it a lot easier and more efficient when we get those public records requests. And so with that, that's the end of my monthly report, and I'll look forward to giving these to you next month.
Great. Any questions?
Thank you, Ben.
What we got going on? Thank you so much.